Well, good evening, and I don't think I've ever seen the chamber get quiet exactly at 6 o'clock. So I was surprised, actually startled. So it is a great, great surprise. So thank you all. But good evening, and welcome to Monday, September 18th, 2023. This is our city council meeting. Our invocation will be given by Stephen Ballantyne, Assistant Pastor of Mount Zion Restoration Church. And if you would please, if I can ask you this favor, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Ballantyne, please proceed.
Our most kind and loving Heavenly Father, we come before Thy throne this day to lift up this council, these civic leaders, as they meet tonight to continue this wonderful city. Heavenly Father, You have given them additional strength and energy to do this job, and we're grateful. So be ever mindful of them tonight. Be mindful of those who have gathered to witness, to participate, that we all might remember this is our city, and we all are accountable to Thee. Be ever nearest, Lord, is my prayer. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
McCandless?
Here.
Steinmeier?
Here.
Hobart?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here.
And we have a quorum, and we shall proceed. Next, we have citizens' requests. And David Sineadus, I hope I said, I hope I said that right, but, but...
Sefuentes.
Sefuentes, so thank you very much. And please, the podium is yours. You have five minutes, and just please state your name. And if I could, just for a moment, David, I missed a procedural thing. We need to, there are people who are here that are non-residents, and we need to actually establish the rules so that we can give them a moment. So if I could have a motion to waive the rules for non-residents.
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second? All right. With the body's pleasure, will those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It passes. And so, David, thank you for your patience there, and you have five minutes, and please proceed.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is David Sefuentes. I've been a homeowner and resident of Independence for the past 29 years. I'm here to petition the Independence City Council to make changes to the current noise ordinance and special event permitting based on our experience with excessive noise in our neighborhood throughout the week, and in particular on Saturday evenings for most of this year and in years prior. These proposed changes to the existing ordinances are a response to our peace and quiet being disturbed every Saturday evening for hours from excessive noise on Nolan Road, from car stereos playing music so loudly it travels blocks away, and can be heard in our house with the windows closed, and loud enough to rattle the walls and windows of our house. Our neighbors have even reported the noise gets so loud that pictures have fallen off the wall. Tonight, I'm speaking not only on behalf of my wife and I, but also on behalf of the residents along Nolan Road who have also experienced the loud noise on Saturday night, Nolan Road car events, that have become a public nuisance due to the sheer size, lack of organization, and security. My wife and I have spoken extensively for the past several months with members of the Independence Police Department, the property management regarding how to address these noise disturbances from vehicles and people in the parking lots during and after these events, sometimes until 2:00 a.m. Sunday morning. We've also spoken privately with the mayor, two city council members about this issue, and is why we're speaking to the full city council this evening, to bring light to this issue and make changes to help alleviate the excessive noise disturbances, including low-frequency bass noise from subwoofers that we have been enduring each weekend. Additionally, noise from loud car stereos along Nolan Road and cars racing through our neighborhood coming up from Nolan Road have woken us up from sleep at different times throughout the night and throughout the week. And in fact, car, loud car stereo, low bass noise has been a problem throughout the entire city. Therefore, I would like to propose the following changes to the existing city code. Again, this is a proposal. I've referenced the articles and sections in current ordinances based on my research and believe them to be as accurate as possible. First, I would like to change Chapter 7, Article 10, Section 7, "Excessive Sounds Prohibited in Public Property," to be changed to be effective between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m., unless authorized through a special event permit. The current ordinance doesn't get enforced until 11:00 p.m., by which time the noise has been going on for five to six hours of low-rumbling sounds that sounds like thunder, revving of engines, screeching tires, loud singing, and sporadic cars backfiring. Second, pursuant to Chapter 12, Article 1, Section 10, "Sound Amplifying Equipment Prohibited," Paragraphs B and C specifically, be changed and enforced in public or private parking lots in addition to city streets unless a special event permit has been issued. The section should be enforceable at all hours, not just between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 8:00 a.m. To clarify, Paragraph B, "Car stereos operating at a high volume heard outside of the vehicle and its occupants would be included in the noise ordinance enforcement." Furthermore, I'm petitioning the city council to require organizers of public events with 25 or more participants that meet in public or private parking lots, with the exception for school and church events, be required to apply for a special event permit under Chapter 14, Article 7, Section 1, and would otherwise be considered loitering and a public nuisance under Chapter 7, Article 10, Section 13 of the current noise ordinance. Lastly, I'm requesting that special event permits for large public events of 24 or 25 or more participants include a clause to have a security plan required similar to Chapter 5, Article 16, Section 15, used for carnival events where perimeter security is needed in addition to security personnel for the duration of the event. If the event takes place on private property, the property owner's written permission must be filed with the special event permit application in addition to the event organizer. I believe these changes are necessary to address in part these car events, which are loosely organized, lacking clear start and stop times without security, to make sure attendees follow the rules at these events regarding keeping the noise down, leaving trash in the parking lots, and enforcing participants to leave the parking lot after the event ends. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next is Todd Owen. Is Todd here? Todd Owen. Hello, Todd. All right. As a matter of respect, I'm going to put that back for Todd, and if he comes back in, we'll call for him at the end. Next is Tony Summer. So Tony, come on forward.
Hello, my name is Tony Summer, 220 West Mill Street. I'm a member of the Sustainability Commission, and there's just a couple of things we wanted to speak about tonight. First is the Beautification Award, which is on the agenda tonight. Giving awards and recognition is part of the Sustainability Commission's mandate. This award will be given in two parts. One aimed at individuals and small groups. So small groups would be like if you, you and a couple of neighbors went out and picked up trash. The other would be given, aimed at businesses and large organizations like nonprofits. Throughout the calendar year, the Sustainability Commission will receive nominations for the awards. Then we'll evaluate them through the first quarter of the ensuing year. On Earth Day, which is April 22nd, the Commission will announce the winners. And the winners will receive a plaque and a tree and be recognized at city council meetings. We also hope the mayor would be willing to do a picture with the winners. We also wanted to let the community know that we are organizing a historic bike tour of Independence on October 21st. This tour will start and end on the square at the movie theater parking lot and visit six historic locations: the Bingham Wagner Estate, the Chicago Alton Depot, the Community of Christ Campus, the Truman Home, the Old Neck Neighborhood, and the Vale Mansion. Each location will have its own tour guide, giving a brief presentation about the history of each site. There will be two tour groups, one that leaves at 10:00 a.m. and another that leaves at 11:00 a.m. Each group will have a guide to lead their group along the route. We expect it to take roughly an hour and a half, and it's open to all ages and abilities, and e-bikes are welcome as well. Again, the date is October 21st, with groups leaving at 10:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. We also brought plenty of these flyers today, so if anybody here is interested, feel free to come over to us. We're sitting just right back there, and we'll give you one of the flyers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Next, we have Lucy Young.
Lucy Young, 2320 Viking Drive, Independence, Missouri. I was born into a military family. When Dad transferred to a new assignment, he loaded up the car and drove to a new base. When the backseat got out of control, he would cut us a look and said, "Don't make me pull this car over." With that thought in mind, let me recap your last meeting. I'm pulling this car over because there was no leadership shown by anyone Monday night. The council was divided into two teams. The first team wanted to put stronger rules in place. The second one didn't. Some council members chose to sit in the stands and watch the game instead. Each team allowed the other to go on and on, wanting them to give, wanting to give them enough rope to hang themselves. Both had to design a plan to usurp power and use that to their advantage. There was no decorum, and anarchy would rule instead. The council meeting was run by rule of the day. Excuse me. The chair has a responsibility to keep order, but the mayor pro tem or any council member can call out point of order when things go awry. It is your duty to do so to ensure that the meeting is conducted in an orderly and efficient manner. It seems that council members were throwing stuff out to see what would stick. There was no real researching of the topics listed on the agenda. It created an unruly meeting, which is odd, considering that three of the six mayoral candidates in the last election participated in this debacle, or was creating chaos part of the plan. The legislative report was polished, but no council member asked if we could lobby the state to put a cap on the Jackson County assessments. Odd again, considering that a couple days later, the council voted to sue Jackson County over their assessments. That's going to cost us about $100,000 with little chance of success. It will not help the 2023 tax bills. We must be in a PPP pandemic, patronizing political pandering. The mayor's emergency powers were brought up, and it hearkened back to the lively discussions of a previous council challenging those same duties with their mayor. After the pandemic was over, those discussions ended. Then the council went on to discuss the defunct Art Commission. Why wasn't a copy of the resolution dissolve that committee and attach letter written by a person that spoke that night included in that information? Thankfully, one council member did remember that 501(c). Why was a city employee called out by name three times during your meeting, and their health discussed? That seemed like that broke a personnel rule or two. I can't mention a department head or council member by name, but council members are allowed to disclose an employee's personal health information from the dais, and no one objects. The meeting continued to decline. A council member who had the floor turned it over to somebody that had already spoken twice that evening for over six and a half minutes. This time, she spoke about comments made in a previous meeting. Nothing like beating a dead horse as an apology had already been offered. Then the council member spoke about people being offended by those comments. Was I offended by those comments? No. But they shouldn't have been said from the dais. They were totally inappropriate. But I have been offended by things in the past, like Missouri City, Rockwood Zoller Foam contracts, and the campaign donations tied to those projects. I was offended by the FBI investigations that went on for years. I was offended by a council vote to overturn the AMI smart meter contract without any public notice. I was offended that a city employee's health was discussed at this dais three times. That employee should receive a public apology, as they were called out in public, in a public meeting. But I was most offended that hundreds of speakers were made second-class citizens that same night. One person was allowed to speak three times on multiple topics for over 14 minutes, yet I'm limited to five minutes on one topic. Speakers have to agree to these terms. So why didn't that speaker have to adhere to these long-established rules? Because she and a council member had spoken about those subjects privately? The charter is very clear about favoritism. No one is to be given an advantage over another, and citizens are to be treated equally. Fair enforcement of the council rules with time limits on speakers at council meetings should be equally enforced. It is time to get off your high horses. If you don't want your job, step down. If you're planning on not running, don't dirty the nest as you exit stage right. Get back to doing city business and quit this petty battle for power. Anything less is a disservice to the citizens.
Thank you.
And I put, I put the council rule on my agenda.
Is Todd Owen here by any chance? Todd Owen signed up to speak. Todd Owen, okay. We have one last speaker, Kenneth Williams. Kenneth, the floor is yours if you like.
That's going to be a hard act to follow.
And if you could adjust the microphone, Kenneth, I would, and please state your name and your address, please.
I am Kenneth Williams. I am from 8 Solander Street, Matreville, Sydney, New South Wales, Australia, a non-resident of Independence, here on vacation. I hope you forgive me for speaking very slowly. I have not had a stroke, but I find since I've reached middle America, some people have trouble understanding my English. As a taxi driver once said to me in New Orleans, "I see your lips moving, man, but I can't understand a word you're saying."
And Kenneth, if you'd give me a favor, just get the microphone. And you might want to help him, Jeremy, just to line it up, if you wouldn't please mind. Thank you. And just the top part, from what I'm seeing is he's just not faced towards him. There we go.
Does that matter?
Oh, that's marvelous. People at home are going to be able to hear you, no problem. So, thank you, Kenneth.
Mr. Mayor, Rory Rowlands, council members, citizens of Independence. I bring you greetings and felicitations from the city of Randwick, which is in Sydney, in New South Wales, in Australia. It is the oldest Sydney council, being established in 1859, considering our prison settlement colony was started in 1788. I just want to state to you that I've spent a lovely six days here in Independence. I came here originally to see a gentleman who I knew as Rory Rowlands from the credit union movement, who I'd met in 2005 in Washington State. He's now turned out to be the mayor of the city, and although I haven't been given a banquet or a parade, I'm not insulted, and I will take back your greetings to the city of Randwick. What I would like to say is that I'm much encouraged by your beautiful booklet that you've published. I found it very helpful, very beautiful, very convenient, very large writing for us old codgers. So I would recommend that to everybody. Also, I've found unexpectedly a large amount of history in this town, as explained to me by the gentleman called Ralph, who runs these tours in his cupboard wagon. I had no idea that so much history existed in one place. I came here, as I say, to see Mr. Rowlands in a private capacity, and also to check out the home and the museum of Mr. Truman, who I knew, who was a president here. I accidentally found on the way across Kansas, not finding Dorothy and Toto, but finding the Dwight Eisenhower Museum. So I'm getting two presidential museums for the price of one. Let me say that I encourage you, as someone who loves oldness and old buildings and old parts of town, that you keep your old part of Independence as you are now and improve it even better. I think it's a lovely place, and I think you can do well to bring tourists here, if that's your intention. And I love the fact, in many ways, it's away from the I-70, which means it's got a bit of quietness to it. I'd like to say that I'm sorry that I didn't have time, although I tried to arrange it, to bring some parchment or documents of felicitations from the mayor of Randwick, who is a friend of mine, Noel De Souza, who is my pharmacist. Also, from my local Member of Parliament, Michael Daly, from the New South Wales government, who is an old schoolmate. Unfortunately, time was short, and they couldn't arrange that, but maybe something afterwards could be done. In the meantime, I'd just like to say that, at the last minute, I was able to arrange something, and so I have a present here for the mayor. And what I've given him is a membership of the AOOB. The AOOB is a charity now, but it came about because when the penal colony was established in Australia in 1788, and the convicts, many of whom were people of the underclass and people who chose at that time, for who knows what reasons, not to be married, and because somebody forgot to send any priests or pastors, most of the children who grew up in Australia from 1788 were, in fact, bastards.
We can't say that, so...
They were, in fact, children of unwed parents.
But please proceed, but in a kind way. Thank you.
These children of unwed parents, over the years, were very happy to have the term, which I cannot use in front of you.
Please.
And so that's led to the fact that Australians now regularly greet each other on a regular basis when they come up to each other in any public place by saying, "How are you going, you old person?" Stroke, inverted commas, "B."
And Kenneth, I hate to tell you, but you are out of time. But if you like, he would finish in the hallway.
I will finish now by giving you, Mayor Rory Rowlands, your official membership of the Australasian Order of Old Bees.
Thank you very much. And what we'll do is, I'll make sure that all of your elected officials also get gifts from us that you can take them back. So thank you, Kenneth.
Just as a finish, people like George Bush Senior and other American servicemen who served in Australia during the Pacific War in '45 were quite impressed with that terminology I've just used, and they've brought it back to America. And so if you wish to, as Americans, you can join the International Order of Old People.
We're good. We're good. We're very, very good. Please don't applaud. All right. As a promise kept to a fellow council member, I want to apologize for my comments regarding the Health Department and analogy I used. For those of you who missed the study session last week, I again want to apologize for my offensive remarks towards women. I understand that my words were hurtful and disrespectful. I am truly sorry for the pain that I might have caused, or, excuse me, the pain I have caused. I should have known better than to use an analogy like that. I am committed to doing better in the future, and I will work hard to make sure that my words and actions are always respectful to everyone every time. I hope that you can forgive me for my mistake, and I truly am sorry for what I have, the damage I have caused. I also want to apologize for my marks for the city, excuse me, the City Health Department. I say that the city council acted five years ago to reorganize the Health Department. The city manager staff thoughtfully and deliberately reorganized the city Health Department at that time. Their approach eliminated many redundancies and efficiencies with Jackson County, and it saved the city over $400,000 in savings. So, Mr. City Manager, well done. So I regret my words created confusion and painted an unfair picture, and I offer my sincerest apology and for those that it impacted, and I hope that we can put this matter to rest. Thank you. With that being said, we will move on to another topic where we have, this is Constitution Week. Is that correct? And we want to honor, and we actually have... We have four people that we want to honor for tonight. For Constitution Week, we have Robert Grover, is the son of the American Revolution for the Harry S. Truman chapter. So come on up, Mr. Grover, and we'll have the proclamation for you. We have Patricia Stewart, Daughters of American Revolution, the Independence Pioneer chapter. We have Peter Reynolds, son of the American Revolution, Independence Patriots chapter. We have Christine Anne Hughes, Daughter of American Revolution, excuse me, Daughters of American Revolution, Fordo Sage chapter. So if everyone can come up, we have... And also, thank you, we have the Independence Patriots chapter, Stephen Sullins, if I said that right? Did I say that correct? Thank you, Stephen, and Ron Pario, is that right?
Ron Paris.
Ron Paris, okay. Please forgive me. And... Absolutely. Do you want your colleagues by you, is that what you're saying? Yep. So if you can go down by Robert, okay? And Patricia Stewart. Hey, Patricia.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And you come over here and take that picture. Come on up here. Feel comfortable right here. See, before I got folks to jump up there, that's pretty...
I would like to say that the Independence Pioneers, and a representative of the National Society, Daughters of American Revolution, want to present you with a Constitution Week Certificate of Award presented to the city of Independence and Mayor Rory Rowland in recognition of outstanding work of a whole in promoting the ideals of the Constitution of the United States presented by me on this day at Sinai National. So we appreciate your work and your long, long work of honoring the Constitution.
Thank you very much. We'll get, we'll get a picture here.
Yeah, yeah. We appreciate the city recognizing the Constitution.
Absolutely. Very good. All right. And did everybody get a picture? You have a picture, everybody here.
Good to see you. Oh, it's so good to see you, boys.
And I just want to say, I've been to a number of the events of the Sons of American Revolution and the Daughters of American Revolution, and they have done a terrific job. So, very, very good. Also, on this, we want to, there's an award by Kelly Freeland, past president of the Junior Service League and Chair of the Susan Block Award, this, excuse me, the Susan Block Distinguished Public Service Award Committee. So Susan, I believe you have a presentation, and the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kelly Freeland, and I am honored to be here on behalf of the Junior Service League of Independence as past president to present the 2023 Susan Paxton Block Distinguished Public Service Award. Ms. Block was a second-generation member of the Junior Service League, including a term as president. She also represented the 3rd District of Independence on the... on the City Council from 1992 until her death in 1996. Her father, the late Bill Paxton, established the award in 1997 to honor her memory and recognize individuals from city employees to volunteers. The Susan Paxton Block Award is open to any city employee, volunteer, or elected official who has demonstrated outstanding public service valor and job performance with leadership. I'm also really excited to be able to introduce Susan Paxton Block's sister and brother-in-law, Barbara and Ron de Blasi. Would you stand, please? I am very honored to announce this year's recipient of the Susan Paxton Block Award is Officer Travis Gillihan, School Resource Officer at Nalan Middle School. Officer Gillihan, why don't you come on up? I want you to stand up there so everybody can watch you, okay?
This is perfect. Well done.
Okay, so Officer Gillihan was nominated by Nalan's Principal, Dr. Lori Mertz. She said that Officer Gillihan's commitment to the students and community is evident by the relationships he builds with families. They rely on him for safety, advice, and friendship to ensure that the children and neighborhoods stay safe. She notes this is especially important in an area where families often do not trust law enforcement. I would now like to share a few examples on how Officer Gillihan has gone above and beyond. One day about a year ago, there was a call from a school down the road that a student had eloped. Officer Gillihan immediately responded to ensure the student's safety. When he arrived, he was told the special needs child had run into a pond. There was no child visible, so he jumped in the pond and along with another officer was able to locate the submerged child and be in CPR, saving the child's life. Another example of his commitment occurred last school year when a student's bicycle was stolen from the schoolyard. Officer Gillihan reached out to local bike shops and worked with one to have a bike donated to the student, spending off-duty time to ensure the bike, to secure the bike, and present it to the child. On behalf of the City of Independence and the Junior Service League, I would like to thank you, Officer Gillihan, for your ongoing exemplary service to our community. Congratulations on this honor and receiving this distinguished award.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it. This is an amazing honor. I'm overwhelmed with gratitude. I wanted to thank the Chief of Police, the Deputy Chief, Adam Dustin, the Deputy Chief, Jason Peterson for being here, other members of the Police Department, my family. Thank you all for being here today. And we'll definitely thank my personal doctor Lori Mertz for the nomination. I greatly appreciate the honor. I think that just the opportunity I have to be able to build relationships with these kids and their families is amazing. It's what I enjoy. It's my passion. Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Officer Gillihan, that is... You're an inspiration. And the work that you did, and I just think that's an incredible story of saving a child with disabilities is remarkable. And you are such a positive influence in our community, but also a positive influence for our city. And I can say, I cannot say thank you enough. And it's also close to my heart. My youngest son also has disabilities, and I hope that if he ever gets into trouble, there's somebody like you to help him. So thank you very much for the work that you do. Thank you very much. That brings us to the consent agenda, so...
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the City Manager.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you. The motion for this consent agenda has been moved and seconded. Is there anyone that wished to pull any items for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Can I have item number eight pulled for consideration, please?
Absolutely. Item number eight will be pulled by Councilmember Perkins for separate consideration. Thank you. Anyone else? Other items for separate consideration? Anyone else for separate consideration? Okay, item number eight will be pulled. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for the... Please make a motion in a second, please, for the consent agenda. We already did, all right. So if we could, Madam City Clerk, if there's no discussion, please proceed with the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes. Councilmember Perkins, the floor is yours. If you'd make a motion for item number eight, I'd be grateful.
I'll make the motion for approval of item number eight, please.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. You have the floor. Please proceed, Councilmember Perkins.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for the City Manager. Can you explain just a little bit more about the Winter Road and Complete Street program and how this ties in holistically with our Truman Connected program?
Would be glad to. I want to begin by thanking our city staff who submitted this grant application. The competition for federal funds, as you can imagine, is a highly competitive process going up against all the metropolitan cities here in the Kansas City area. So kudos to our staff for working so hard to secure not just this grant, but at this level. As you may see in your packet, this is a five-and-a-half-million-dollar grant award. We're going to see, as a result of this grant, improvements along Winter Road, beginning at 24 Highway and stretching all the way past Van Horn High School, and then on around the bend along Winter Road to approximately Hedges there on the outskirts of the Inglewood Arts District, as we conventionally know it. Some of the improvements that you can look for... One of the biggest ones, and I know has been on the city's list of priority projects for years, the unconventional intersection in front of Van Horn High School. There'll be a realignment of that, which will help with pedestrian and vehicular safety in that area. We will also be making additional pedestrian and bicycle improvements in there so to make the area of Winter Road truly a multimodal use through there. And then other various infrastructure improvements, such as stormwater improvements to replace old galvanized steel stormwater drains, which are antiquated and undersized, so that'll help with stormwater flow during wet weather events. So we're going to get quite a bit of improvements from a street perspective, bike and pedestrian safety, bus stop enhancements, as well as stormwater improvements through there. So we're very excited about bringing this. And then, as Councilmember Perkins alluded to, another federal grant we've competed for and secured, the Truman Connected Project. This will only help to serve, build out our bike network in the city. So for those who either use that to commute to work or other social activities, or those who just enjoy that for the recreational perspective, we continue to add those features to our community and make sure that regardless of your preferred method of travel, there's a safe way for you to move about the city.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So this is just connection, more adding on to what we already have in the pipe. So I will appreciate the support from my colleagues on this matter.
Any further discussion on item number eight? Any further discussion on item number eight? Hearing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number eight, please.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes. And item number eight passes seven to zero. Thank you. This will bring us to resolutions. And Madam City Clerk, could you read? I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Then the next item is regular agenda items, and this is our first public hearing. This is for your information only. I'll open the public hearing. And then, Mr. Arroyo, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on August 8th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is a property at 704 North Pearl Street that is currently zoned R6. It was built as a duplex structure in the early '60s. This rezoning will actually move it to an R12, which will correct the legal nonconformity of this property to allow it to continue to be used as a duplex. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All right. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
Twenty-three dash zero eight three, An Ordinance Approving a Rezoning from District R6 Single Family Residential to District R12 Two-Family Residential for the property at 704 North Pearl Street in Independence, Missouri. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I had the good pleasure of meeting with Mr. Chet Campbell. He is the property owner of this location. He drove up and spoke before the Planning Commission. He drove from Texas to come up to present himself before the Planning Commission to show how interested he is with this rezoning. Planning Commission did move forward with it unanimously. The property maintenance person who will be looking over the property lives here in Independence off of Ebbingston. I'm, I will be in favor of this.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll on twenty-three oh eighty-three.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes. Item number twenty-three zero eighty-three passes seven to zero. This takes us to ordinance, and this will be second readings. Madam City Clerk, please read twenty-three zero eight one, please.
An ordinance levying a tax on all real properties subject to taxation on January 1st, 2023, within the corporate limits of the City of Independence, Missouri, for general revenue and public health and recreation purposes and for the Independence Square Special Benefit District. Said levies and assessment being the separate and distinct all for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of July, 2023, and ending on the 30th day of June, 2024. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on twenty-three zero eighty-one, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To inquire of the City Manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, we have had lots of newspaper articles, people coming and testifying, talking about the challenges that Jackson County has had in assessing. Can you please talk about the requirements the city has to be able to set its levy and move forward?
Yes. Regardless of what any other entity or agency does, the city still, under state statute, has a responsibility to have our levy adopted and submitted to the county by October 1 of each of those reassessment years. So we have been provided revised figures by the county. Those were submitted to the council by email last Thursday. Under the state law, we cannot see an increase in our total valuation greater than the Consumer Price Index for our area, which means because the assessment amount as a whole for the city has gone up, we have to do what's known as rolling back our levy to account for the increased valuation in our community. So tonight, council is being asked to set that levy at an amount less than what it has previously been adopted for in accordance with state law.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? No discussion aside?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Just a question. Do we need to move an amendment on this based on the item that was recently published? Looking at maybe City Council?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I would move that amendment, then.
Second.
There's a motion for the amendment, and there's a second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor, just for the community's benefit, I can give a quick update on what that looks like. So between when the council had the first reading of this ordinance back on Tuesday, September 5th, and tonight, the 18th, they have continued, the county has continued to process appeals that were made by property owners in the Independence. So the amount of the assessed valuation has changed, which has a corresponding impact on our levy amount. So I'm going to share these numbers just for, you know, complete transparency. But the total valuation for Independence decreased from the amount we were originally given. Original amount was $1,940,814,959. The revised amount as of tonight Because that amount has seen a slight decrease, the levy itself needs to, and the ordinance you're adopting tonight, needs to have a slight increase in it to meet the Hancock Amendment threshold. So the general revenue levy, first reading, was .3151 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. We are asking that to be amended in accordance with state law to .3235 cents per $100 valuation, pardon me. The health and recreation levy to be increased from .1479 cents per $100 of assessed valuation, increasing that to .1524 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. So slight increases in both of those levy amounts due to the decrease in overall assessed valuation.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any other discussions on this? Anyone else? Other discussions? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three zero eighty-one. Oh, we need to do the amendment first, please. Thank you, Mr. Coover. So we'll be voting on the amendment, and then we'll be voting on twenty-three zero eighty-one.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Coover. Any other further discussion on the amendment? No further discussion? Please, Madam City Clerk, call the roll on the amendment to change the levy amounts.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rollins?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the amendment passes seven to zero. Any further discussion on the main bill of twenty-three zero eighty-one? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on the second reading of twenty-three zero eighty-one.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And twenty-three zero eighty-one passes seven to zero. This brings us to twenty-three oh eighty-two. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill and then we'll have discussion.
An ordinance amending Chapter 20, Public Works Manual of the Independent City Code and all references to this chapter. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on twenty-three zero eighty-two?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Permission to address the city manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, can you give us an overview of what this does and what we're hoping to accomplish by amending the Public Works Manual?
Yeah, it would be my pleasure. So, I'm very excited about this item here tonight. This is an item that is specifically mentioned in your city council action plan. For those that use that as the scorecard at home, it's item four point two point A. So, just again, a reference to the community and the council that your adopted plan continues to be our guide and that we're working that plan and following that. This item specifically is going to help with Independence' ability to work with the development community. I think at various times, we've all heard frustrations expressed about what may seem like a rigid or confusing process when working development projects in Independence. This moves from city code, the items in what was traditionally known as the Public Works Manual into a separate standalone document. So, it's much easier to find and to reference for those in the development community. This also brings us in conformance with many of the modern-day standards, particularly with our peers here in the Kansas City American Public Works Association, which is the group of developers that work here in our metropolitan area. So, we'll be more consistent with what other cities are requiring. You'll see an increase in the quality of the work that is being done. For example, one of the, one of the primary examples that registers with me is requiring that curb materials be built using granite, so they will last longer. We won't see the crumbling curbs that we see along the road. So, out of this item, I think we're going to see more efficient development processes with the city, a cutback in some of that red tape that can prove frustrating, but also a higher quality product that makes our community's assets and resources last longer and have a better visual appearance and impact in our community.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I just wanted to give a shout out, Mr. Walker, to you and your staff, that I think that I am continually impressed with Ms. Reynolds' ability to do more with less. I, I don't know how it's going with the combination of those departments since Mr. Montgomery retired, but I, I just wanted to let you know on my behalf that I am, I am constantly impressed. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three zero eighty-two.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-three zero eighty-two passes seven to zero. Madam City Clerk, please read the next bill, twenty-three oh eight four.
An ordinance terminating redevelopment project one of the North Independence Tax Increment Financing Plan, dissolving the Special Allocation Fund account for redevelopment project one of the North Independence redevelopment area, and authorizing and directing the city manager or the city manager's designee to take all necessary steps to implement these aforementioned actions. Second and final reading.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager?
Please.
Mr. City Manager, it's always exciting when we retire a TIF. I think we should ring a bell or stand up and clap for something important. Could you just give us a summary of the progress we have made in retiring TIFs for the city?
Yeah, I would be glad to. And just for the community's awareness on this item, this was the Tax Increment Finance Project that funded the construction of the Winterstone Golf Course and redevelopment of that area. We have now successfully met all the obligations of that TIF, which allows this action tonight to terminate that. Not that long ago, the city had in excess of 25 different tax increment financing projects active in this city. With this action and one more that we intend to bring to the council before the end of this calendar year, we will be down to just 11 active TIFs in the city. So, we continue to eliminate debt and free up tax revenue for our entity, but also the other taxing jurisdictions like the school districts, the libraries, et cetera. So, very good progress for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
If I may address the city manager?
Please.
Mr. Walker, I believe when I, when Councilmember DeLucci was Chair of the Audit and Finance Committee and I was a new member, I believe the TIF number, and Mr. Norris may know this as well, I believe we were at 26 or 25 TIFs. That was only two to three years ago. Does that sound right?
That sounds very right. Yes, yes. That, that's a, that's a good number.
And no new TIFs since then, although we do have a, technically, we did approve a very, very tiny, tiny portion of a TIF for the hub development at 291 23rd, but that's not a traditional TIF in the sense of the word. But, otherwise, no new TIFs in the sense of our 11 remaining TIFs.
And I misspoke. It's 10. So, let's ring that bell and clap a little louder.
We're going to go over those, I haven't talked to our finance director, we're going to go over those TIFs, at least briefly, in our next Audit and Finance Meeting, just so we can catch up. But, sure appreciate, again, all you and your staff's hard work. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate that. And yes, we will have a little bit more of an extensive update and presentation at your next Audit and Finance Committee Meeting to show a little bit more detail on the remarkable progress that's been made in that area.
Surely, seriously, it's spectacular to think we've come that far in such a short time. Spectacular.
Indeed.
I also concur with your comments. Councilmember, great job. City manager, Mr. City Manager, well done. Anyone else other further discussion on this? I was hoping in the discussion we'd go from 11 to 10 to 9, but we stayed at 10.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We're locked in at 10.
That's okay. We're locked at 10. All right. Anyone else other discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number twenty-three zero eighty-four passes seven to zero. Madam City Clerk, please read the next second reading, please.
Twenty-three zero eight five, an ordinance amending Section 12.01.003A assault of the Independent City Code. Second and final reading.
Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Sen, or, Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To inquire. Just making sure that this is not eliminating assault in our city code. It is not changing anything. It is really bringing us in compliance with Missouri statute. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. It just, it actually expands the definition of assault under our city code and, again, makes that consistent with Missouri revised statutes, which were also changed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're quite welcome. Anyone else other discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three zero eight five.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number twenty-three zero eight five passes seven to zero. That brings us to twenty-three zero eighty-six. Madam City Clerk, please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing the city clerk to do all things necessary for the holding of a primary and general city election within the City of Independence, Missouri, in compliance with the charter adopted by said city, as amended in all state laws in reference thereto, and to certify to the Jackson County Board of Election Commissioners all names of candidates properly presented by petitions under the charter and for the holding of a primary election on February 6, 2024, and a general election on April 2, 2024. Second and final reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Any further discussion? Just for the sake of clarity, could I ask Mr. Coover some questions? Just so the packets, if I'm correct, will be available tomorrow. And then, when is the closing date for packets to be sealed? And I didn't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. So, I know it is, it is open tomorrow.
Tomorrow is correct.
I apologize. I should have asked you the question earlier. That's okay. We can pass and, and I know that item, that information will be posted.
Mayor, if you, if you want, we can get that information pulled up and at the tail end of the meeting.
I am perfectly good with that. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor?
October 31st is the date.
There we go. Okay. So, October 31st is the, so it's, it opens tomorrow and then it closes on October 31st?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. So, that's quite a window for folks if they choose.
Mr. Mayor, to be a little more accurate, the candidates can pick up their packets tomorrow. The first day of filing isn't until October 10th.
Okay, so October 10th.
Last day of filing, October 31st.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Any other further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three zero eighty-six.
Fears?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item number twenty-three zero eighty-six passes seven to zero. And that brings us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, please read the bills.
Twenty-three dash zero eight seven, an ordinance approving a completion timing agreement with respect to the Cargo Lager Project. Twenty-three dash zero eighty-eight, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District 01 Office Residential to District C1 Neighborhood Commercial for the property located at 625 West 23rd Street in Independence, Missouri. Twenty-three dash zero eight nine, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District C2 PUD General Commercial Plan Unit Development, and approving a preliminary development plan for the properties at 15621 East US Highway, 24 Highway in Independence, Missouri.
Thank you. And then, we've got some information there for information only. This brings us to Councilmember Comments. Councilmember Stewart, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, once again, thank you for your apology earlier. I as well hope we can move on from here. I did want to speak about the meeting last week that our, the speaker earlier brought up. And the way I want to describe the way that meeting last week, I'm not going to say because I'd probably get gavelled. But, let's just say it was quite the show. And I'm just as much to blame as anybody else. So, anybody, if anybody took offense the way I acted last week, I do apologize. And I just hope that I will try to do better. I hope we all can do better and I hope we can move forward from it. Yesterday, I had, I had brought up to the city manager recently, I think maybe even in an open session, about possibly giving back to the community with some passes to Adventure Oasis. And a couple of days ago, I did get a resolution from the city manager that'll be on a study, study session in the future. So, I'm pretty excited about that. I think it'll be good. Hopefully, the council agrees with me on that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Perkins?
Nothing to nightmare.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Yes, just wanted to mention that I had an opportunity last week to attend Independence Square Association quarterly meeting. At that meeting, the lady who's in charge of the World Cup event for 2026 for the city area made a presentation. Very informative the amount of money that's going to be brought into our communities in the metropolitan area is really staggering. It's conservatively estimated at over 600 million. And the thing that I wanted to say about this is that I talked with her afterwards a little bit about what we need to do in the city to prepare for that. And, and I asked her if she thought it would be beneficial for us as a city, that they're going to have, as they get more staff on, they're going to have groups that work with the cities. But, I asked her if it would be helpful at this time, if she thought it'd be helpful for us as a city to form some sort of a, an ad hoc group of staff or whoever to begin brainstorming really what could be done relative to, to get more of those dollars in our city as opposed to other cities. Well, I don't want to limit other cities, but, you know, you understand what I'm saying. And so, she, she said, yes, that would be a very good idea for us, that we can't start too soon on this. And so, if we could begin to work on that, that would be my recommendation. If that, to Mr. Senior Manager.
Yes, I would be happy to take a look at that. And also, one of the items I would recommend we, we dust off was about a year ago, we did pass the resolution to create a World Cup Steering Committee of different industry experts, if you will, from our community. And it probably is well time to bring that back forward and consider filling that out and getting that group active.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Steinmeier, please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. Yesterday morning, I woke up bright and early, about 5 o'clock, went and made myself some coffee, got my first cup, sat down, started just doing a little channel surfing, not sure what I wanted to watch. And then, I came across the channel and lo and behold, here's a face that I knew on a national program. Our, I didn't realize that we have a celebrity in our midst, but I was very proud to see that our Chief of Police was on a national show talking about policing in, in our country and what we're doing to kind of shorten those gaps. He was very well informed, very well researched and just made our city just sound very, very good. So, I wanted to just appreciate him and show a little appreciation for everything that he did to get up that early to go on a national show to talk about policing in America. So, it, it's good to have folks in our city that are looked upon as experts and people that make our city look very, very good when we have those moments. And so, Chief Desmond, well done. Thank you. I enjoyed my coffee with you yesterday morning. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinmeier. Councilmember McCandless, please proceed.
I was not able to attend last week's meeting. I know you had a robust set of discussions. I do appreciate your apology, Mr. Mayor. I know that we want to be sure we acknowledge the fantastic women who are leaders in our community and do things that make this place a great place to be. I know we all recognize the power of our words, especially from the dais. It's incumbent on all of us to help each other do better. I commit myself to that. I appreciate that you have too. I wanted to also let folks know that next week, on Saturday, September 23rd, there will be an emergency preparedness fair at the Sermon Center from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So, come over and see some suggestions that they have for making sure that people stay safe. Natural disasters don't just happen in Florida. They certainly can happen here. So, thinking ahead so that you're not surprised, always a good idea. So, thanks to the staff who puts those things on. I know they take a lot of time and effort. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember McCandless. Councilmember Hobart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm a little loath to talk about this because the topic's been beaten nearly to death. One of the statements you made that was quoted in the examiner probably isn't quite right. Because I know we briefly, at least on Sunday before that meeting, talked about, at least you and I talked about it, that I did get some complaints about the statement you made prior, the analogy anyway, which I wasn't thoroughly happy with, but other people were even less happy with. You've apologized multiple times, which is nice. And certainly, I appreciate it. I think what's important is this. As a council, what we all need to do is move past analogies. We need to move past inconsistent rules. We need to move past, Ms. Young was right, we need to move past the inconsistencies in our meetings. It, all, all of that needs to stop immediately. You know, I, I look around this room and... You know, I look around this room, and it takes more than one hand to count the Eagle Scouts, and I'm happy to, I'm happy to say that, myself included, and we're better than that. But we have not been better than that, and not all of us have been holding all the rest of us to that standard. The, the multiple apologies, the insincere apologies, the time for that's over. That's not going to cut it anymore. We need to be done with that. We, we are and have been talking about a GO bond. We have and are in the process of filing suit against the county of Jackson County on behalf of a hundred and twenty-three thousand people, roughly. We are in the process of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on, well, actually, three separate consultants that are going to help us guide those hundred and twenty-three thousand people in making a decision about what to do with our largest public utility. We are in the process of watching a group of very dedicated citizens spend what will end up being hundreds of hours process sixty-plus pages of our charter, asking all those people that rely on us to do all that work and spend all their money and spend all that time while we act like clowns is wholly inappropriate, and to show them no respect is wholly inappropriate. And it's not going to happen anymore. It will not happen again. Not while I sit up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hobart, I hope you find my apology here sincere, and I would love to work with you further to move forward and move the city in a positive way. But I understand. And with that, Mr. City Manager, if I may ask a quick question? We did the trash cleanup the other day, and the park was so clean that we were done within an hour, so that points out that your staff has done an extraordinary job keeping the parks clean, so thank you and well done. And is there any way that we can work so that, I've got something to do out there, I'm just, we go with the staff and get something cleaned up, so it's, you've done a great job cleaning it up, and I guess, kind of way to, we can work to, is there something that we need to clean up? So you've just done such a great job, and when I've gone to parks, I've been cleaned, so I, maybe we cancel the mayor's trash pickup, I'm not sure.
I think the need's always great somewhere, we can continue to look where we need to go.
Yep, so if you'll work on this with, work with me on that, I'd be grateful to do that, but the staff has done a great job, we worked out the park and it was clean, so, and it was very well taken care of, so great job. With that, Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you. Any closing comments, please?
I do want to share one more update with the council and our community. As our finance staff continues to close out our fiscal year that ended on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and our financial, or our action plan that I referenced earlier does challenge us to, you know, control our long-term costs as an organization, so these figures are unaudited, but I hope it gives the council and the community confidence in the direction we continue to roll. Our expenditures for the fiscal year, again, that ended on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, were only three tenths of a percent above budget. That was in a seventy-four, seventy-five million dollar budget, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars above budget, largely attributable to special election that was unplanned but necessary to be held. Because of the remarkable management and savings that our organization continues to hold, we were able to add to our fund balance again this year, and our fund balance now sits at thirteen point seven percent, so we continue to climb towards that goal of sixteen percent. I will, you know, caution as I have before, that part of that has to be attributed to the vacant positions, you know, every organization, private and public, struggles to hire right now, and the city is no different, so a lot of that is attributable, not a lot, some of that is attributable to vacant salary savings, but I also want to give a high degree of compliment, whether it be our frontline staff, our shift supervisors, division managers, all the way up through deputy and department directors. There is a strong sense of financial management and a sense of responsibility to be wise with the taxpayers' dollars, and I'm very proud to show those numbers that indicates it's more than just talk, it's action about how we manage, so happy to share that with the council this evening.
Now, that's outstanding, given the amount of inflation that has been, that's incredible, because I know our household budget hasn't stayed under like that, so with the amount of inflation that we faced and the amount of headwinds we faced, I think that's extraordinary, and I hope I can speak on behalf of the entire council and say that's an incredible accomplishment, and very, very, very well done. So to the staff, all of the staff, because that's everybody collectively, if I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. City Manager.
That is a total team effort, yes, sir.
So that's, that's, wow, I don't know, I mean, congratulations, well done, everyone, good job, okay. With that, we will call this meeting adjourned, thank you.